If you need to recall our town of Windermere, December 14, 2021, council meeting. This is the number, certainly above our status, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all. You can remember your information, father yourselves, be grateful for your God who has made decisions on that for our town and our community. We love your healing hand over all of those experiences, tornadoes, the Midwest. May I say first of all, our first responders here around the world. We begin this evening with a comment, our first public comment is Mr. Bob McHenry, by Prince.
Bob McHenry, by 36 Iconi Street. We'll start out negative middle and on the bottom. Lighting around town hall on the trees. It's absolutely terrific. In years past, our public works guys have turned the lights and then released ballots. They did a great job and I understand they're busy, other things to do, so apparently this year we hired an outside agent. I would guess that we might hire that same thing. You have spaces of a foot between the lights and front of the tree. You have one lamp, two lamps, plain light. We have one lamp goes up five foot, that has no lights on at all. I don't know if they would. Old drugs when they sprung those things up, but they don't appear. Just came back from Bernadette Beach yesterday. And if you want to see what lights should look like, that's a good place to visit. All uniform, same height. So I don't know what to do about it this year, but the high floor was resented and changed what we have out front. Next, there's been some emails, some words going around about membership council and the town manager. I'm here to tell you, as resident in this town, I have always instilled full support our town manager. And the county and the actions they take, and they disagree with the actions. But you guys are doing a great job. If someone has a complaint, they should force that complaint. They should leave the personal attacks out. I apologize to each of you, what my fellow residents have said. Thank you for the job.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas and certainly. Everyone's always free to conduct business, agree or disagree. Certainly, there's never any personal grounds. Always try to conduct ourselves here. If I'm not conducting myself that way, we might be held accountable. Our expectation is for the rest of the. Thank you, officer. Do you have lights? So just so I make sure that I'm clear, surprise is not available this evening.
Correct. And Officer Wilson has just arrived.
Okay. So I have Officer Mark Wilson who's not, but then who is here?
Officer Wilson's here.
But Mark Wilson is here.
Yes, surprise is going to be in the mess out here in Denver.
All right. Okay, chief. Sorry. Would you like to present Officer Mark Wilson to this community?
Did you have any other public comment?
I don't believe not any.
Trying to encourage it.
Uh, Mark, come on up. I have the same pledge of identity issue, having community service award. From myself, Officer Wilson, if you guys remember, eight months ago? Not many months ago, that we bought a board retired from the York City Police Department. And maybe about 20,000 other police officers. And moving around the country, we're very blessed and honored to get here in town. Mark's kind of hit the ground running and one of the things that he did while he was up there was essentially kind of a neighborhood replacement that called us something different up there. But he's really taken on that same job, the responsibilities down here. So he's done several different programs, including our care program, which is a program that we have because of their community or any of our residents or residents that are in here. We have a resident that maybe these little nights of care are also will be served a vital check on them at least once a week. Make sure to call them if we have especially during time of significant things going on such like tornado or power outage or something like that. They also will go by and have a list to make sure that they're okay, make sure that they have. Saying the elders' lunches coming up and does anything significant go to town, we don't bother beyond that running up. And also Wilson's taken on that responsibility along with a couple of things that just do routine patrol to notice that the town needs, so we stepped up to do those. So today we're going to issue him a community service award. So Mark, you recognize your dedication service at the town of Windermere, the Windermere Police Department. You embrace a SARA model for which we use to scanning analysis, response assessment, problem solving, observing. An issue on handicap market in Windermere Recreation Center. We took the time to develop and structure a solution that provides an easier parking access for more citizens requiring the need. Park in those spaces and notify public works. Additionally, we voluntarily assume the role of the care program coordinator immediately and reach out to those residents who participate in their sort. Your actions attempt to apply community wisdom model, SARA concepts, and have earned you this proceeds award granted this Saturday, fourth day, December 2021. Mark, doing a great job. Thank you very much.
First, uh, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it very much. When I was in New York City, I, at the end of my career, I was a neighborhood police, I bought neighborhood policing. I'm a neighborhood coordination officer. And at first I really didn't kind of think it would work in New York City and I bought into it and I fell in love with it. Realized that it's something that society today does need. So I bring here what I've learned there, which is an enormous amount of training that they gave me to instill this neighborhood policing model and it does work. I, I really fell in love with it, but when I came here, I think what, what drove me to come here and win here, and I took that anywhere, was Chief. I can't say enough about him. His vision for this town, what this town meant before he came here, what I read. His vision for this town has started everything around and I do know what I can bring to the table for this police department. I think that it falls right along the line of what he believes in. So I, I look forward to instilling these models and serve you and hopefully I can serve you well. Thank you very much. That's kind of impromptu, but you know, a lot of police officers do a lot of things and nobody gets credit. They don't get credit for it every afternoon. They did get credit for it. There's usually 10 things they did or 100 things they did. Remember one, the accolades for, for example, Sandy D had a tree fall through her house in the middle of the night. And she didn't really say anything else. I just had to be over the next day. And she said, who is that police officer who came by in the middle of the night to make sure I was okay? I told her it was Mark. She said, he's the nicest police officer she ever had. So I'm just saying for every one accolade you get, there's 100 different times when people, police officers have done things that nobody does. So I just want to make sure one more thing added to the list. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Tom. And not only to the accolades, but also always appreciate the notice and support of all of the officers. You know, if one of the officers is, that is an immediate definition. And I did a, actually, I've got that. So, and this evening will be ordinance number 20, page 1, dash 05. Next will be our second, not reading, so I'll go and read this one next after. Public hearing will take all, any public opinion and comment on this item. We will then close the hearing and council will. Page 5, this is ordinance of the town council, town attorney recorder pertaining to parking violations, commending division one of article two, chapter 20. And adding a new division, reading to article two, chapter 20 of the town's code of conduct, to be titled parking violations. Providing descriptions of parking violations, adopting a schedule of simple penalties for parking violations and the procedures of appeal violations. Providing the town special magistrate the authority and power to appeals, parking violations, providing per se verability, application and effective date. At this time, 6:14 PM, we will close our Windermere Town Council meeting and open a public hearing at the same time. And any and all of those who may have commented on this item, they have to be signed in our frame. Seeing none, we will close our town of Windermere public hearing at 6:15 PM and reopen our town council meeting at 6:15 PM. Council, in front of you, you have ordinance number 22, page certified. Or any questions that you have, or a motion to.
Mayor, yes, sir. I just have one quick question. Page 8 of the, in the. Section 20 dash 38, highway 430. We may have talked about this before, but. Last, last part that we're addressing is on the south side of Lakeview, Lake Street. Is that supposed to be Lake Street?
It should be, it should be a lake street and it would be a scrimmage there, so it wouldn't have to be advertised here with a public hearing. So it is small details that we didn't catch in the first reading, secondary.
Thank you, councilman Markey, for that. I'd like to note that.
Mayor, I mean, too, if we didn't, I know that the board's already standing at the end of the second reading, we could extend that for at least 45 days. Allow a couple of courts, board of commissioners to make sure that we have the appropriate signs and put their places to enforce these. And then after that, we'll have a 30 day term of enforcement and then get into the real enforcement of the new statute.
You can say anything.
Oh, I would like that, yes, after this one.
So we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll go ahead and approve this item if council so desires and at that point we can move to make the 5 day condition to. Council, any further questions, comments, or concerns? Or ordinance number 20, page 1, dash 05. Seeing none, do we have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second, second, councilperson Depp. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with councilperson Williams.
Aye.
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 Let the record reflect that ordinance number 20, page 1, dash 05, passes the yes. Council, at the request of town interestment, we would like to have a 45 day additional time period for the march round parking. Council, do you have any concerns or questions regarding that?
Are the, are the no parking stay out of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll actually be, it'll be the same now, 45 days, gives town staff the opportunity to have signage, ordinance numbers. As well as continuing, so. Motion to approve, councilperson staff.
Second.
Second, councilperson Williams. Council, any further discussion, comment, concern? Seeing none, you can vote with councilperson Depp.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion to approve. Senator, any staff opinions?
Uh, yes, and I have a comment on the minutes as well. If you're listening to that right now.
Yes, let's hear that.
Um, Russell, this is the number 29, town council workshop minutes. There was discussion briefly on the boat houses and others that we've done vacant rounds. That specific issue wasn't really voted on and there was no real consent based on what I saw on the video. So we will briefly discuss that at the January town council meeting, just for clarification purposes, of what it should be then, vacant works you. We spent that, not to get further than we, but again, it's one of the items that was discussed, but really wasn't. Consent to sue or vote on.
Right. Yeah, and I, so the recollection that I got is that must discuss it, it didn't mean a lot of traction, but it was not. Basically or positively left.
Yeah, there was just one one clarification, because when we reviewed it again, it was kind of hazy on if there was actual corrections. So that's the one direction it will come back to town council. Again, it is to either leave the necessary structures or repair them and leave necessary structures or to repair them and then we spend that.
Thank you. All right, council. So for item A, we have two sets of council meeting, well, we have one council meeting minutes for November 9, 2021. And the town council minutes, workshop minutes for November 29, 2021, that town interestment will just reference. You can approve both of these as one item, break these out separately. That may be my guidance this evening, since we had a separate conversation. Because we have a motion to, no, I just need to say that. Motion to approve, motion to approve, councilperson Markey, go to second.
Aye.
Second, councilperson Depp. Any comments? No changes. Seeing none, we'll vote for a motion to. Wait, wait, sorry, guys, it's been a period. We'll begin voting with councilperson Depp.
Aye.
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 In November 9, 2021, town council meeting minutes patch unanimously. Next up, council is the November 29, 2021, town council workshop meeting minutes. A motion to.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson Depp. Second, second, councilperson Markey. Any further comment, concerns, or questions? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Depp.
Aye.
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 And then November 29, 2021, town council workshop minutes. All right, cool. At this point, we will move to contracts and agreements. First up is the West Second Avenue construction access and easement agreement. Staff, can I present on this item another piece of information?
Uh, just with permission to approve, the section that we're looking at is properly owned by six property owners. And you need this easement or construction roadway for groundwater, for total water and for road improvements. Again, this will increase our BMP numbers to make sure that we are awarded the construction portion of this grant. Uh, this has been negotiated for several months with those residents at the end of West Second Avenue and we're discussing it individually with each of them.
Thank you, brother. Council, any further questions or concerns about item I? Seeing none, we'll vote for a motion to approve, council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson Depp.
Second.
Second, councilperson Depp. Council, any further discussion, discussion or comments? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Williams.
Aye.
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 And item C, I, curious, yep. And this week, the West Second Avenue construction access and easement. Council, also up is item D this evening. These are other items for consideration. We have item number one and two. This is a Butler Basin 90% design approval. And then also the Bessie Basin 90% design approval. I think we have just a brief presentation from now until February 29th. And then of course, council, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, we'll want to get those while I was here and then do approve both of these items.
Mayor, thank you very much. Since the approval of the 45% design by town council, we move forward with 90% plans. A lot of that has to do with refinement of details. Um, so we took the comments at 45%. We reduce wells where possible and spend it shoulder gathered locations that were possible. Basically with the goal of minimizing impacts to adjacent residences. And I think we've achieved that with our 90% design. As part of that, we also have been coordinating with the town and Orange County utilities to lay out a total water line. Uh, once again, with the goal of reducing impacts to adjacent properties and trees. Um, we had a public meeting on December 1st that was very well received. We did have one comment on adjusting the planting in the rain garden from a tropical milkweed to a native milkweed, and we got that. And so with that, we're ready to, upon approval, ready to finalize the plan to secure permits from South Florida. As well as Orange County utilities for the drainage water bank permits. And that would put us immediately deadline for the grants if we would have been in January for that work. So with that, I'll open any questions.
All right, and we can have a meeting for both of these, correct?
That's correct. But that will discuss some of the problems.
Council, any further questions?
Go ahead. Just sort of, can you kind of explain the package strategy as we discussed earlier?
Sure. So with the drainage improvements, we can obtain the water, the water management disapproval. We have the plants essentially ready to go. That last 10% is relatively minor compared to the rest of the work. So that's all ready to go. We're ready to bid in January. Uh, with the water main, we have that currently in permitting with Orange County utilities. So along with that, it's also contingent upon the master utility fed approval, which is also in process. So because we're relying on the approval of the MVP in order to get approval of the, our utility permit for the water line construction. We want to separate that out of the bid and have this as a bid alternate. That way it doesn't affect the water main. The benefit is you'll have the water main price secured from a better bid with the contractor. You'll have the drainage as well, and then you keep them up on the water main with the straight to go, except for me secure. So we'll have an alternate bid for the water main and I'll coordinate with Robert and Tom to shoot for him.
We still need DM to approve this as well as part of the design instructions that takes some time, which will buy some time for Orange County utilities.
My only concern is with commodity pricing, which is they want to delay that, which will be a big price after a certain amount of time. Um, because commodity pricing now is fluctuating, so that should give you a better, better bid price.
Right.
So what we've been doing is with FM, is we've been prepping them for the bid, letting them know that we have a time sensitive bid. That has been working, that's been working for some big county projects in terms of their approval and then pushing that up. So your commodity prices don't get run on you, which happens now, they seem like two weeks, so. Um, now, I say that, that was prior to tornadoes, so I know a lot of FM staff just emac'd out to Frankfurt. So that could sway this further, so we're going to need to make sure that we just take that into consideration, document that. Hopefully the litigation staff, their level, I doubt that they, they shouldn't be in place, so hopefully that won't affect that.
All right, and then dealing with hearing to some of the projects that were originally approved that dropped out, which helps fund, fully fund the gap. Of what we're experiencing as far as pricing crisis. Um, and then also they're providing us with, uh, not delays, but extensions of existing contracts due to unforeseen circumstances. Meaning, you know, delivery of items, the lack of, uh, people responding to the bid and so on and so forth. So we're working with them.
Yeah, and this is something that we can certainly share with everyone else doing these projects. So in terms of extension. COVID, supply chain issues, material costs, shortage of labor, even the weather, take factor in everything. Uh, so. It's still a bit of a little dice, but should be good. All right, council, any further questions?
Uh, Mayor, I just want to commend now and his team, Victor and John Fitzgibbons, and for their flexibility and patience and help. You know, staff and residents. Working with us the whole way through. I know it was challenging at the beginning and I don't know if it got easier, but I appreciate all our work that you guys have done. Thank you. And I think, I think it's a good learning process for everybody. You can learn how to better obtain citizen input, utilize the citizen input, you know, get a consolidated field for what the residents desire. And then combine that with the engineering tactics, you know. And then to not only do that, but to kind of work it into a federal litigation program, it's like the cherry on the top. So from staff to residents to our engineers, all of our support as well as council, we appreciate all that. And I think it, I think we benefit down the road from the kind of the lessons that we learned in this process, so. Much appreciation of all.
Council, any additional questions? Seeing, um, we're looking for a motion to approve the other base of 90% design.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson Depp.
Thanks.
Second, councilperson Depp. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Markey.
Aye.
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 I don't want the other base of 90% design, that's unanimously. Council, at this time, we have the best case of 9% design.
Motion to approve of the best case.
Councilperson Depp, second. Second, councilperson Depp. Seeing none, we begin voting with councilperson Depp.
Aye.
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 The best case is 9% design. So, council, if we need, or formal business, we have our mayor and council liaison reports. I certainly want to take this opportunity to, especially every time, happy holiday, Merry Christmas. Been another challenging year, but with a lot of steady forward progress, I think we can get better and better. Certainly, proudly, all in your arm and staff and all of the professionals that. Council, any further additions? Aaron, council liaison, fine, fine job. I think we played that entire, great job.
Also, well attended.
Exceeded two years ago and they've already got the groundwork for the next year. Uh, we're going to do Polar Express, it'll be the thing. So the tree decoration around town will all be the thing. Um, also, we have elders' lunch in class Tuesday. Excellent, excellent turnout. We served over closer to 90 to 100 meals. We had 12 or more table stay packed. Uh, we did a holiday meal, turkey, hams, the whole, all of us. That's, that did come, it was good, we had a good time.
Okay, very nice. Thank you, and please send our rest of the world this conference. So any further comments or? Yes, councilman Depp.
Uh, the holiday movie night is the Saturday.
Right.
Right, sorry, because I mentioned that one. But, um, 6:90, 30 PM, and, uh, and in Parks and Recs has, um. Been a lot of two stores downtown and they're still, still looking at some things for Newman's Streets and, um. They've done a tremendous job on this, on this two stores. And then they're still talking about football, trying to, um, in the homework, uh, homework. They're trying to still figure out the, um, with all the parking and the swells and everything and trying to figure out which stuff up where you get.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a quick pickleball comment. I, I ran across two articles since the last meeting of communities that need to re-strike basketball courts. Or put down strike on a basketball court. We have oval or temporary nets that they swing out away from the, uh. Courts where people play basketball. So maybe as an initial, uh, try at pretty people, I'm going to try that out here. I think that the temporary nets or the, the mobile nets are a thousand to $2,000 each, super end to the commercial rig. Uh, so might be a good way. dollars each, super heavy, too, commercial grade, uh, so might be a good way.
Yeah, I'll definitely ask the committee, maybe I'll actually.
But she didn't hear it from me. That's councilperson, uh, councilperson Martin from wherever. I almost blew it on you, but I don't want to do that. Right, uh, staff reports, town manager said.
Uh, yes, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and then, um, Monday, we have a second avenue public meeting, you're doing well, uh, so we're going to finalize the nine percent plans open, uh, probably the fourth time council in January. Uh, this Thursday, six P M., we have the workshop publicly booking, I think we're up to forty-five percent, uh, plans on that. Uh, we're still working on state appropriations, uh, that's working its way up to the committees, um, checking in the federal appropriations for the bridge, um, still working with Val Benny's office, hopefully that will proportion. Uh, Western Shell Care lines have allocated certain lines to the connection of the trail systems, uh, they're setting up a advisory committee, kind of like a small N P O, will be sitting on that, uh, so we'll be working on various projects and pretty much what any N P O does is, you know, just rank the, the projects and be fun with projects. So all the municipalities will be represented, and all municipalities will be processed on through the Western Shell Care lines. Uh, the ones in sales tax initiative is going to start again, and the representation is town council in January. Um, what they're looking for again is to generate a ones in sales tax, uh, in Orange County, uh, some funds, some rail, uh, the links plus systems, and also, uh, pretty much take care of the backlog, all the transstitutions that we have in Orange County. Uh, again, we discussed the boat houses, we discussed in January relative to leaving them vacant or not, D R P. will be meeting on the twenty-first at Revarian's, and we do have food truck Friday, this Friday, uh, which moves going to be at Santa Claus, and then I do want to thank, uh, council member David, uh, was working with Orange County water system, found are able to, uh, start doing the, uh, some interpretation with the kids, um, once we go live, they'll start doing their book reading here, and then, uh, based on their book they're reading that day, they're going to teach toddlers how to sign, uh, teach, um, infants how to sign, parents how to sign, and they'll pull that stuff these, uh, so I think it's a great program that initiated and, you know, recommend, uh, customer. So.
Excellent, thank you very much. More, little words.
Good evening, town council. Um, I have a brief report this evening. You will have noticed that our street sweeper has been out and about, that was because we were able to replace the brush, and so you're going to see that sweeping a lot of the street aprons, that's for our M P D S requirements, and then you'll see them sweeping off those sidewalks that everybody loves to use, but can get a lot of dirt buildup on them, so you will see the green street sweeper out and about, wave to Caleb when you see him. Um, some of the other items that we're working on, and it goes back to what Councilman Davit was talking about earlier, we're looking at hopefully piggybacking some paving contractors with Orlando or Orange County, as well as some sidewalk companies, so I'm looking into that, because I think if I can get them to agree to piggyback Orange County's cost on an active contract, our cost should be a little bit lower, because those are higher volume contracts, so that's kind of what I'm working on. I've reached out to three companies, um, so far, one of them will be coming in January, they're that backed up and they're that busy, so, um, three companies we're looking at for paving, I'm looking at three companies for sidewalks, and we'll get the best piggyback contract that we can, and hopefully get moving on some of those early in the year. I really like to get my projects done early in the year rather than waiting towards the end, so we're excited about those opportunities, paving and sidewalks, and so that's all that I have to, oh, no, actually, I have one more thing that I'm really excited about, it goes back to the Parks and Recreation Committee. I was able to have a meeting this week with the coordinator for the University of Central Florida's Public Administration Doctorate Program. He's willing to help us with a citizen survey of residents relative to what they would like to see in the parks and types of activities they would like to see, and I think that will help inform the Parks and Recreation Committee of what might be acceptable items to start thinking about adding into parks, so we're excited about that, too.
Sounds good. Council, welcome, sir. Lori, good to see you.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Um, why don't I have a big report, uh, I did have a story about Jonathan Skibbins, but he's not here.
That's normally what we talk about. That's serious.
Oh, want to hear? Yeah, okay, I'll be, right in it, just quickly, y'all, y'all may know about five years ago, John's son headed off to Westway after the, uh, appointment, and some of you may be aware that I was a Navy grad, so for the last four years, uh, when I was one, three, at the last four, I mean, Navy games, John's, it's enjoyed tournament, and then about two results we had. So anyway, this year, the game was not especially promising, because they had a pretty mediocre uh, record, three and eight going into the game, Army had the exact mirror image of they can free, so I think John just ignored game figure, and if the outcome was pretty pretty firm, so if anybody sees him, they must know, okay, yeah, they're telling the problem. But the other thing I would say is, uh, on behalf of Heather, we, y'all had a great, wonderful process in probably season, we really enjoy working for the town and the mayor, I'm glad Heather let the town to see me, thank you.
It's good to have you.
Gee, uh, along with food truck, I'm excited, I have this book break, we're going to be starting that by thirty P M., so if we're going out on the, on the link, um, right around that time, by thirty, by forty, before our book at the blue lights, so we'll kind of leave it out as we want to. Uh, also, thanks to the Winter Police Department Foundation, uh, we, uh, during center kids got their secret candles, they were pretty excited and stoked about those, and, um, we had a, a local friend as well, who actually, they heard it went some laser equipment, and he has approached, so thank you guys for that. You guys may have noticed that, uh, I posted some opening, did a kind of scratch in your head, or how do we have openings? Um, we actually have two reserve police officers, uh, opening, uh, so Lori, um, it's Lori Sypek, is going to step down for the reserve program, also Marcus Stepel, who decided to step down for the reserve program, but he wants to stay on with the law here, because that is science show, and, um, to do that. Uh, we posted for a full-time off opening as well, you may or may not have heard that also here in April, this is what they know about moved to Colorado, he's a Midwest boy anyway, he's been on with you that for years, he's been with us for six years, so I know, uh, you guys are like, oh, shit, sort of going to read everything in the morning now, I'm all upset that comes out, but, uh, we've been working with him on this for a while, so I'm really happy and excited for him, um, get an opportunity to get, go where he wants to go, he's, he's, he's done a great job for us, he's looking at kind of moving on to the next phase of his life, he's got a great girlfriend, I think he's going to put more than that, so it's just great, he's, he's going to move on, sorry to see him go, but, uh, so I just wanted to go out there. In addition to that, and you see very quickly, um, a post for detective position, so before you leave, sorry about that, um, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Detective John Allen, uh, has got forty years of law enforcement, he says it's time for him to get his own event on Drive Across Country, and retired, because they're exactly going to do it probably around April of next year, he says he wants to, he wants to sit down in the new police department and enjoy that for a little bit, so we're going to go statewide for that, obviously to get somebody to scour, or is, um, it's going to be pretty tough, I've been working on this for a couple of months already, we're going to leave the opening, uh, open for a while, we're going to submit that in for a police association magazine in other locations, and, um, we're going to take our time for that, my personal gift, so when you see those opening, there technically isn't some openings right now, but we, we're pretty confident, we are very confident that they're going to happen, so we just have, okay, our, moving into the facilities, and then in that stage is the accreditation. Um, I told you last time, our timeline in the accreditation was applying in June, as long as I think we're going to get in there in February, we're probably going to be applying in January, we're prepared, we're ready for that, we're at a cheaper operation window, um, but I moved that up to, uh, my personal goal three months, um, so with the name months of our bus being in the seats inside a new facility, uh, hopefully we'll have a final accreditation session, which is a pretty aggressive goal, but I'm pretty confident we can work with this time to get there. And, um, tomorrow, I will be, uh, with, with the Saints, um, at the bond here, that we have, so if you guys don't have anything to ask me about that either, I'm just making sure we support that family, uh, and all of the areas that come up there.
Excellent, great, so, we're, we're all there, anything?
I'm sorry, happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Anything additional, council?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, if you want to.
Skip over it.
I'm going to skip over it, because I said the last one, too, yes, Paul Fine, he's open, it opened the eighth, and will close January setup at noon.
Hold all those, you group them. Is there, um, one other thing, Mayor, the, uh, the Winter Golf Car Parade is Sunday, it's busy weekend, Sunday at five thirty, uh, everyone's speeding over at the park at Fifth Avenue, Oakdale Street, and that Christmas tree is fantastic, and so much is stunningly beautiful, so, Merry Christmas, everyone, happy holidays.
Sure. The board meeting is for the trail, is that going to be completely virtual, and is there drawn? Or is it?
Yes, it's virtual, uh, it's called workshop, so those are virtual, and then, yes, there are designs, I think Daniel was working with those, so. Sounds good, all right. Anything else really good on the hour?